Okay, is everybody ready?
Whatever.
Okay. We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, it's September 27th, it's 10 o'clock, and all three county commissioners are here. So we'll move forward with consents and approval with our county administrator. Good morning.
Good morning. We have one request to create a new statement for $750.65 and 20 extra donations for $14,063.19. Minutes for September 20th, 2023. Vouchers, general county fund, $66,914.98, 911, 2003.47.58. Chestnut Ridge Park, 2002.71.27. Mon County Center, 6,001.12.02. Recreation levy, 1,004.60.81. Accessory valuation, 2,008.59.90. Payroll, 1,028,827.30. ARPA, $965.76. Purchasing card vouchers, general county, 7,382.75, 911, 219.90. Mason Dixon Park, 2,0446. Mon County Center, 388.67. Accessory valuation, 95.45. For a voucher total of 1,122,292.39. We have a budget revision that requires in-house approval for the general fund for litter control. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on the website and fiduciary orders for September 27th, 2023.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Proffin Moon, second. All those in favor say aye.
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 It passes. We have no fiduciary orders today, right?
No additional fiduciary.
No additional, I apologize, no. Okay. Do we have any introduction of any new employees?
Yes.
Okay.
Youth Services Center, we have a part-time relief worker, Kirsten Everson. On-call basis, not eligible for benefits, part-time at 14.40 per hour. Start date is October 3rd.
Approve personnel as presented?
Second.
Proffin Moon in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes.
We also have a dog warden position at the K-9 Adoption Center, Alexandra Wheeler, effective October 1st. Full-time, benefit-eligible, $30,000 per year.
Move to approve personnel as presented?
Second.
Proffin Moon in second. All those in favor say aye.
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 It passes. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we will have comments from the public. Please feel free to state your name, your address, and you'll have three to four minutes. We look forward to hearing them. Do we like to speak? Mr. Nichols?
Thank you very much. My name is Duane Nichols, D-U-A-N-E-N-I-C-H-O-L-S. I live at 330 Dream Catcher Circle in Morgantown. It's actually in Stewartstown. I'm president of the Cheat Lake Environment and Recreation Association, now for 16 years. You may know that public hearings were held Monday of this week on behalf of relicensing of the Cheat Lake Dam, otherwise known as Lake Lynn Hydro. During the afternoon session of two hours, there were about 24 people there. And during the evening session of two hours, the estimate was 150 people, but it was more than that. The vice president of our group, Mike Strager, went to the meeting to speak, and he couldn't even get in the door. So this is a topic of considerable public interest. The primary topic of public interest is whether 307 acres of land will be removed from the project and put into the private coffers of the owner. The owner is said to be Lake Lynn Hydro, otherwise known or owned by Eagle Creek Renewable Energy, a privately-owned company of Ontario Power, which is a Canadian company. So the foreign ownership was mentioned a couple of times, but the main thing is whether to give up the land. And of all the people who spoke and testified, of all the people who have written, none have been in favor of it. My organization has multiple reasons, and we have submitted those to the record. But as important to us here is something called a shoreline management plan. At the present time, the operator of the dam wants to wait until after the relicensing, which is at least a year and a half away, in order to start developing a shoreline management plan. My organization asked them to develop such a plan five years ago. So we're after support for and encouragement for the development of that plan concomitant with or before the relicensing process is completed. My neighbor goes to the park regularly. Another man that I met at these hearings I'd never met before said that he moved to Morgantown because of Cheat Lake. He has a young daughter who is fascinated by water and water sports. He told me that every trip over there's been a disappointment. Because even though the facility and the opportunity and potential is there, it's not well-developed, it's not well-cared-for, it's not operated well. The maintenance isn't sufficient. I'm going to turn in two documents here today that show some of the information of my organization. And finally, I want to request a working meeting with this commission. Hopefully next week. I consulted with our vice president, Mike Strager, and he could be here at that time next week. I consulted with Frank Jurnasik, who I would like to invite to such a meeting. He's a retired fish biologist from the State Department of Natural Resources, Division of Natural Resources. He is interested and willing to come along with us. So it would be a limited set of, on my side, perhaps four people on the meet right here. That's my request, and I thank you for this opportunity to come and see you today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
Is there anyone else who would like to come before the county commission? Seeing none? I'll close this end. Okay, thank you. Close the portion. Public meeting. Okay. At this time, we have a presentation from Susan Riddle, President and CEO of Visit Mountaineer Country CVB. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to give you one of my several CVB tourism updates for greater north central West Virginia, as well as Mountaineer Country. It's been a busy year, but quite successful. And since I last saw you earlier in the summer, we completed our tourism summit, which was very successful. And we just got back from the West Virginia Governor's Conference on Tourism at Kanane Valley. And I'm proud to report that we won a couple of different awards. These are, we actually were the winner of the Star of the Industry for the Future of Tourism because of our work that we get to do with so many of our partners, such as yourselves, our internship program, WVU, athletic, I mean, there's a number of different groups that we work with, as well as throughout the region. As well as, we were the second year for winner of a video winner that was during the conference. That was the result of our team's efforts. Hannah and the rest of the team are quite skilled and very good at what they do. We also had Arthurdale, which won the Star, the Spirit of West Virginia for the Star of the Industry, as well as Mountaineer Trail Network. They got the award for the regional collaboration. I mention all those because we, in order to get these awards, you submit your applications. And what's really neat is a couple of what originally were our interns, and now have grown into staff members, wrote these applications. And it was, it was a very humble, but rewarding moment. So glad to report that. I was afraid that if we didn't come back with something this time, I was gonna have a board member that was just gonna ring our bell. But the key focus is for tourism statewide, tourism growth in general throughout the state. I know regionally, we are back to pre-2020 levels. We're not back on occupancy, but rate is well compensating for all of that. I'm sure you see that in the increases in your lodging taxes, as well as emphasis on tourism workforce development, which we're involved with. I've been assigned to the Tourism Workforce Committee for the Advisory Council for the state, so more to come on that. Also, return on inclusivity, actually working on helping our state improve our brand reputation for, you know, coming and experiencing our outdoor recreation and all the resources that we have here. We are, our mountaineer hospitality pays back dividends over and over and over again. And we just need to get that message out, what we have to offer. The power of video, as well as something that the state is investing in, that I'm gonna be working with our destination development coordinators. They've actually purchased a platform to help connect small and large operators with the Brand USA operators. It's something we've, it's bringing back more of the international travelers. We used to have a pretty robust segment of that here, specifically in Montague County with our relationship with the WVU International Students. And that kinda dwindled over the last several years. We've been working with the state on some of their initiatives, and that's something we're gonna be rolling out. It's very hard to get on those platforms, it's very complicated. But a lot of the small operators, where they wanna come in and they want to be able to sell their tickets to their facility, or they may wanna sell an Airbnb, or a bed and breakfast, or even a lodging property on a franchise basis, we'll be working with them to get them all plugged into that. We've had a lot of success with several projects we've been working on, one of which, quite exciting, we're doing two pilots with the State Tourism Department, excuse me. One is a sales program. One of the things we did at conference, I presented on the Tourism Innovator Panel, and everybody got to vote on what we did. Well, we showcased how we sell our destination. And it's not always something that everybody can relate to in all the different small communities in the state, but we made it very clear to everybody, two things. One, CVBs are just marketing, or just advertising, if they're not also selling. Because marketing is sales and advertising, number one. And number two, you know, we're an events destination. We are, we don't run events, but we attract them, we evaluate them, we procure them, we support them, we promote them, and our destination is better for that, for that traffic, whether it's sports, tourism, whatever that may be. We were able to go ahead and explain a platform that the state is piloting with us. It's a sales platform, where we essentially give this marketing company all of our information, and they work with us, and they're essentially a way for us to work smarter, not harder. They help us target specific markets, go ahead, go after specific meeting planners and different groups that might be interested. So far, we've procured about $311,000 in business that's in the pipeline, but it's like a 2024, 2025 thing. So that's going really well, and for our investment, which was minuscule compared to what the effort is to do something like that, we're not traveling to conferences and kinda shooting darts on the wall. That's one of the things we're doing, but more, we're a little more excited about. We're the pilot for the Leave No Trace Program with the state. So this is an example of collaboration that we do working with our partners. Montague County Schools has decided, rather than piloting one or two 5th grade classes for us, they're actually rolling it out to all the 5th grade classes, which that was the end goal after the pilot, but they're jump-starting. So we'll be going out into all the 5th grade classes and teaching these students and actually getting them certified in the Leave No Trace Program, which is essentially taking care of your environment, preserving the natural amenities that we have, and helping your fellow students and parents and visitors and everybody to do the same. So that's pretty exciting. Our tourism summit, two big things that we're gonna be working on rolling forward. We're gonna try and tackle wayfinding on a regional basis. You might have to come save me a time or two, because I don't know that that's, that's a really big undertaking. We're working with tourism on that, as well as OEDC. Andy Williamson at OEDC through the Outdoor Economic Development Collaborative, great partner of ours. So we're working on that. We're also evaluating gravel trails. Gravel trails are, you know, embracing that outdoor recreation. It's, that's been all hardened up for us to crack. We have a lot of things going on, but it's hard to really pull an initiative around relatively small segments of smaller audiences than what we normally work with. We've had a couple of things that I'll close with. We just launched a new revamping of our website, so please go to visitmountaineercountry.com. We study all the data, we've got videos out there, we rolled it out. The initiative we're doing right now is Mountaineer Country, What's in It for You? We have a scavenger hunt and some other things. And our results for the first two weeks that's been out there has been four times what our benchmark was, so we're real thrilled with that. And then my destination development coordinators have put together what's called the West Virginia Honey Trail. This was the result of me going around to my municipal meetings. I had an elected official came up and said, hey, did you know our community was named a honey trail? Or a honeybee location? And I said, I didn't. And they said, is there anything you can do with that? And I said, well, I don't know, but let me connect you with our coordinators. So they went out, long story short version, they launched the honey trail in mid-August. What they ended up doing is they worked with the Mon County Beekeepers Association, the Department of Agriculture, the State Tourism Department, as well as all of our partners through our Mountaineer Deals Program. And they accumulated, when it was launched, 24 different West Virginia state parks, 71 businesses, which is much higher than that right now, as well as giving all these businesses and locations various and sundry materials to link this all together with our landing page. And in the first two weeks, we had over 200 scans and almost 700 website sessions on something that was just something they happened to put together. So it, things are going really, really, really well, trending well. And we're in the process of sending out our RFP for our creative services. We do that about every five or so years. And we can't thank you enough for your support. We really are very grateful. I know we don't have questions, so you know where I am. You need anything. Thanks a bunch.
Nice to see you brought us in normal.
Shameless promotion is Russ called me out on, yes. That's one of our other campaigns, Come Go Wild, so.
And I do wanna say thank you. I know that, if I could just say, because of the football games, I always see you and your staff driving those vehicles. I don't know how you can do it in front of 60,000 people, so very pleased. But Steve Blenko's mom needed it, 90 years old, and you came, got her and took her. So I just want you to know that it was, we really appreciate that part.
We have fabulous volunteers and a terrific staff, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Okay. Colleen Coon, we do not have any grants. Correspondence? Do you all have any?
No.
No. Okay. No unfinished business, so let's go to new business. Okay. To consider the adoption of a reimbursement resolution by the county commission, which would authorize a reimbursement of expenditures incurred with respect to the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District prior to the issuance of special district excise tax revenue bonds, which may be issued by the county commission with respect to the district from the proceeds of such bonds.
I move that we approve the reimbursement resolution as presented?
Second.
Proffin Moon in second. Any discussion, because may is the key.
Just a little clarification. The developer, along with our council and financial advisors, in the process of working toward a potential issuance for the ODD, a portion of the proceeds from that issue would refund outstanding obligations for the district, including the bond anticipation notes that were issued in December 2022. The remaining portion would be new money for projects within or benefiting the district. The purpose of the reimbursement resolution is to provide flexibility for either the county or Westridge to be reimbursed out of the proceeds of the bonds for expenditures made prior to the issuance of the bond. So for, in order for the expenditures to be reimbursed with proceeds of taxes and bonds, we have to do this resolution. So this is, this is, this isn't official action to issue bonds. It's just a procedural step for tax purposes that the bonds can be used for, that allows the bonds to be used for previous expenses.
Okay. Thank you. Proffin Moon in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Consideration to prove a memorandum of agreement by and between the Mon County Commission and Morgantown Community Resources as a recipient of a grant for the Economic Development Initiative for the community project funding congressional-directed spending for Hazel's House of Hope renovations and upgrades for the Montague County Commission to act as the responsible entity for the purposes of expediting project development.
I move that we approve the MOU as presented?
Second.
Proffin Moon in second. Any discussion or?
Just.
Well, go ahead.
So this is, with the new earmark process that's set forth by the federal government, they require a responsible entity being a local municipality or government entity to basically ensure that the funds that are earmarked are spent for what they are earmarked for. And they require the local governmental body to sign off on that and agree to be the responsible entity to that end, and that's what we're facilitating.
Correct. As the earmark process requires a federal agency issue the grant of the earmarks, and that federal agency is, in this case, HUD. But if the recipient of the grant is a nonprofit organization, they have to get the local governing body, a local governing body to be, become an RE, a responsible entity. Typical with any federal legislation that's thrown together too quickly, they didn't really figure that out in the grant process. And the actual grant has no documentation of acceptance of the, of being the RE. So doing our due diligence, we decided it was in our best interest, again, to do that due diligence, to put an MOU in place that dictated what our responsibilities actually were. And that is the actual formal document that we've created. The federal government doesn't have one. They just says you have to have a responsible entity, but don't tell you how. So we've created that so that we at least have a paper trail of us agreeing to be that responsible entity. So that's why this, the whole MOU outlines the Ts and Cs of that agreement.
And it also covers the environmental review process that has occurred.
Essentially, our responsibility is the environmental review process. All those other, all the other responsibilities are the grantees, so.
Okay. No other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I noticed that two members of the representing MCR are here. Did, Ron, did you wanna say anything?
No, just appreciate the support, working through everything like we had to do with Commissioner Arnadson on our board, appreciate all his due diligence as well.
All right.
Try again. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Okay. Consideration of the president to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Morgantown Utility Board and Westridge Incorporated in regard to certain capacity and related improvements to its water and sanitary sewer systems in the Chaplain Hill area of Montague County.
I move that we approve the MOU as presented?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Yes.
This has been a long drawn-out process.
We had been working on this for over a year. Arnad, if you want to say something first.
No, just that it's been a long collaboration, and this will finally enable the project to go forward that we agreed to so many years ago as part of our CARE Act funding, or not CARE Act, but ARPA funding to expand the capacity of the sewer and water in the Westridge area, not just for the Westridge development, but also for that area of the county to have some much-needed upgrades. It's a tri-party agreement between the developer, us, and MUB. So I'm happy that we're finally here, but Sean can give more details.
We had a gentleman's agreement in the summer of, summer, fall of 2022, to work together with MUB and Westridge on two specific grants, a water grant and a sewer grant that was going to be submitted to the IJDC. At first, we, we were working under the assumption that a 20% match locally would suffice. So this is a $14 million project. The two projects combined are about, one's about seven something, the other's six something, but it's $14 million combined, water and sewer product. So as we were working through that agreement, we got intel that the state wouldn't accept anything less than a 50% match. So we had to go back to the drawing board, find out where we can get the 50%. Prior to that, the commission had committed to come up with the amount. So now we had to go back to the drawing board, and we came up with a plan in which Westridge would cover 6%, the county 18%, and MUB would cover about 24%. I don't wanna bore you with the numbers, I figure the percentages are easy. And that would come up with a 15% match, or I'm sorry, the 50% match of $7,310,000. So in, on 10/19/22, in our regular meeting, we signed that letter. Westridge and the commission signed that letter acknowledging our commitment to provide that, our part, which was about one, I'm not sure what that number is, but to provide our part for the 50% match. We did that October 19, 2022. That was submitted with the grant. On 12/15, Russ Rogerson and I made the trip to Charleston to attend the WDA meeting when they were announcing the grants. The MUB contingent, they had a rash of COVID, and Mike, and Mike McNulty and Jeff Ray were not able to attend because they had been exposed to COVID. So Russ and I went down, and we listened to the WDA's announcement of the grants. We were a little bit disappointed, but they did give us something. They gave us 1.5 million on each of the projects for a total of 3 million. But that was contingent on the county coming up with the remainder of the funding, which now meant our local match would be about 11 million. So we had to go back to the drawing board and figure out where we're gonna come up with the other 4 million. So we went back and forth, and really through the commission's leadership, with Russ's help, we had a lot, lot of discussions back and forth with, with MUB and the developer to try to come up with where these remaining dollars were gonna come from. On 2/22/23, we signed a three-party agreement with MUB, the commission, and Westridge, basically affirming that we were gonna come up with the 75, or the $11 million here locally. And we submitted that to the WDA, which essentially finalized our grant. So now we were getting the money, we just had to come up with the 11 million. We had a gentleman's agreement as far as how we were doing that, and now the hard part, now the hard part just began. So to get there, we, Westridge came up from 6% to 26%. MUB had a little bit more contribution, came up from 24 to 26%. And then the commission came up from 18 to 26%. So we were all given 26%, about 3.7 million. So that's where we started working on the MOU. After that public meeting, we had a meeting with all the parties and said, okay, now we gotta get together and start working on this agreement. And that was really where the hard work began. And again, I wanna thank Russ's leadership through all that. This, this level of cooperation had never been before experienced here in Mon County and/or anywhere in the state. And we were really, had to push a lot of limits. Honestly, just had to bust, knock a lot of heads together. And to keep everybody focused on the real, the real, the real goal is to finalize this project and get this expansion to this side of the county. So after all that, we did, today are finally finalizing the agreement. So 343 days since the initial funding and grants submitted, and it's 217 days since we did the three-party letters that confirmed that we would get the grant to getting this MOU today. And that was a lot, a lot. And that was a lot, a lot of hard work. This was complex, it was challenging, it took a lot of cooperation, a lot of leadership to put aside our individual priorities and come up with this agreement. But ultimately, the citizens of our county are the ones that are going to benefit from this project. So I do, I sincerely want to thank Barbara Parsons, President of the Board of MUB, Mike McNulty, he's the, I guess, I think the general manager, Jeff Ray, their legal counsel. I want to thank West Ridge, Ryan Lynch and, and his, his team, Kerry Cecil, who worked a lot on this project, and we had countless phone calls and meetings in those 217 days. I was actually the point man for the commission, so I participated in every single one of those, and it took a lot of effort to work together. I just, I can't say anymore about how proud I am of finally getting this agreement done. It has been a lot of work and took a lot of cooperation, and again, with my fellow commissioners, I think we're all very proud of finally getting to the finish line.
I really appreciate your recap, and it has been hours and hours and hours to get this done, and I appreciate, Sean, everything that you did to be the head spokesperson for the commissioners. And you use the words I wanted to say, the citizens will see the benefits. That is the key. And not only what is going to happen there, but the growth of the Western End and also Exit 155. There was a combination and connected Exit 155. So there were a number of obstacles to hurdle, but honestly, I, I will say, this is one of the areas of being a county commissioner that is not much fun, but the end result is going to be fantastic. But it took so long, and like you said, all of us and our egos had to be checked at the door. And the one frustrating point, I will say, is that when we went down and we thought it was 20% to go down to WDA, and every other project is 20%, but then they wanted 50%, and then we thought, okay, we're willing to do 50%. And now you see, we're more than 50%.
Then they wanted 80.
Now we're at 80. I want the public to understand that is what has happened in Montague County, but we were able to do it, and we're going to benefit from it, and I think it's, it's an exceptional program that we're going to be able to continue to develop, even though we had to do four times more than any other.
And Russ, Russ is here, Russ.
Yeah, you want to say anything, Russ, because you were the key, because you kept us in line when we were about to strangle people. Come, why don't you come to the podium, please?
The process was pretty well outlined, and I think what was really key was we all focused in.
People can't hear you.
You have to go there, they won't let you see it, we're going to make you get in front, so people can know who to look at when this happens.
I know you're shy by nature.
Yes.
Yeah, I am shy, sorry.
No, no, I think you outlined it very, very well, and I think this is really historical in the sense that we recognize as a group that, that section, that whole quadrant of the county is a growth area for us. Mylin Park, Chaplain Hill Business Park, West Ridge, and, and it's only going to continue in that, that area. So this was one of those critical moments where we needed to open up from water and sewer for that, that quadrant to be able to see its possibilities, and, and I really appreciate everybody's effort. And as the dollar amount got higher, the, the bigger the challenge, but really, really, really excited to be a part of that and, and really proud of the result.
Thank you.
And Ron, if you wouldn't mind coming up, I know this, this affects Mylin Park a lot, and I really want to thank Mark Nesselbrod's leadership in some of the earlier stages, again, in providing some leadership as far as what was available. I know sometimes that intel always kind of changed, but it was also, I want to, I want to thank Mark and Mylin Park Board for their participation and their, their leadership in the early stages of this, so I want to give you the opportunity.
Well, again, we, we appreciate it, because hopefully we'll be coming here to commission in the next month or so, talking about what this actually means in, in new investment that will be coming in that general area. But the overall thing that I think we can't lose sight of is the vision and the leadership that has been talked about. So from a Mylin Park standpoint, I want to thank you all, thank Russ, because I don't know of any other community that would have put this together. I think in all honesty, most other communities would have said, it is what it is, and therefore we can't do what we want to do. And it was very, a very difficult lift, and you all made the commitment, and you're to be commended for that, because really what's going to happen over the next 20, 25 years, when probably all of us are hopefully in other positions and doing other things, and you know, it, the, the benefit is going to be seen of the action that you all have done now, because it has opened that door for continued growth in that part of the county, as Russ said, and certainly from a Mylin Park standpoint, we are very appreciative and appreciative of, of your leadership, so thank you.
Thank you.
True.
With that, and I mean, we have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank God, okay, thank you. Any other new business? Move forward, reports from elected officials and department supervisors. Come on down.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For a while since I've had the privilege of being in front of you, I just was requested to give you a status on the subdivision ordinance, also known as the SALDO, Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance. If you recall, and without giving you a blow-by-blow of how we got to today, it has been almost two years since it was submitted in its current form with some changes that were made as a result of a third-party review from an independent third-party law firm to verify that it is consistent with state law and that it would achieve the intended results. That version has not changed dramatically other than some small edits and pagination, and that has been online for at least a year and a half now in that form. During that time, we also went to Charleston and worked with the legislators to improve 8A. In this process, we identified certain vaguenesses in the legislation, because the legislation was originally conceived of for more rural places, and so there were some just odd things in timing, et cetera. Unfortunately, most, but not all of those timing things were changed, there's still a couple vestiges. Now, in our version, we have workarounds that are fine and legal, as you know. It will allow us in the future, if we, because we are continuing to work with the legislators, to fix these small things, mostly timing issues that are written in West Virginia 8A. That would hopefully allow us to eliminate about 10 pages out of it, because those were if this, if this, if this, then one can blah, 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 blah. So that's what we have in the ordinance that is available to you. We did at the recommendation of the third party, for instance, make sure that we have blank spaces, so I just wanted to remind you of what's in there, that, and deal with the enactment date. So this gives you more flexibility, they're just underscore in the draft, such that you can have an enactment date and then a take effect date. So that gives you the ability to have a grandfathering period and a trial period for this ordinance if it were to pass in its current form. The, the draft ordinance itself, we have online, there is a part that is the ordinance itself, and there is a toolkit that tells you how you can use it, gives plenty of examples, gives you sample calculations of how you would do certain things that would make it easier. In this process, one of the unique qualities of this SALDO or subdivision ordinance is that it is incentive-based, so that if, because we've had a, we have a number of really good developers that was pointed out to us in abundance, that said we shouldn't be punished for doing good development, so in this, there are design advantages and incentives for good development, and so that's one of the unique qualities of this subdivision ordinance and the toolkit to show how a development can take advantage of those facets. I'm happy to answer any questions on that, but I wanted to keep it short, so I didn't cause everyone to go to sleep.
So in its current form, is the, is the planning commission ready for the commission to take it up in a public, in a public process?
It actually is in your hands and has been, it's no longer in their hands, they've already submitted it to you. So that would be your decision to do that. They are still in favor, obviously, but they have not had a recent vote on that, and the members have changed since then, so.
Well, I, as one commissioner, I would appreciate if you, as a planner, could provide the commission with a schedule for doing so.
A schedule for doing?
A schedule for putting it in front of the public and possible enactment.
Okay.
I know that you've done that in the past, but if you would revise and provide that to us for us to consider, and put some dates in there as far as all the process, the notification process, the public hearing process, and then an anticipated enactment if, if it were to be passed, would you provide that to the commission? We will take that up, and then we will discuss when we will, when and if we will put that on a, into the, into the queue for the, the whole public process.
I certainly can.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing them, we'll have reports from county commissioners. Jeff?
Just one thing, had a call from a concerned citizen who was having an addressing issue with their home and post office and 911, and so we referred them to our 911 address coordinator, Pam, and she got a glowing statement back how quickly it was handled and fixed after months of trying to go through different hoops, was virtually fixed overnight, so I just wanted to shout out to that office and thank them for serving our citizenry so well, at least in this instance, that's most instances that I've heard, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sean?
Since our last meeting, I missed the last meeting, last Wednesday through Sunday, I was in Niagara Falls, Canada, celebrating my 23rd wedding anniversary with my wife Monday, I had the Aquatic and Track Annual Budget Meeting, which was a four-hour meeting, which we discuss our, the state of the state as far as the Aquatic and Track Center and the budget for the year going, going forward. In the afternoon, I had a meeting with Open Gov with the administrator to look at a possible budgeting tool. Yesterday, I had a broadband call, and then we had our bi-weekly HR call, the administrator and I participated with our consultants. Today's a regular day, this evening is the MHS Homecoming Parade on High Street, so everybody please beware of the traffic pattern changes. Thursday, I have Mylin, Mylin Park Foundation Board meeting, is that correct, Ron?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure. I have a Health Department Board of Health meeting, our, our every two-month meeting, and then in the afternoon, the Morgantown High Band will be in the Buckwheat Festival Parade, so I'll be going down to Kingwood for that. Friday, we have staff reports, I have a meeting in the afternoon with the constituent, I have a broadband sync, and then in the evening, it's the MHS Willing Park Homecoming Game. Tuesday, I've been invited by Ella Belling of the MRTC to attend the ribbing cutting for the Collins Ferry Connector, which has been open for a while, it's the new connector to the rail trail off of end of Collins Ferry, and since I've been a pretty vocal user of that trail for years, well, what used to be a goat path, Ella asked me to participate because it's in my neighborhood, so I'm going to, I gracefully, gratefully responded that I would be happy to. Mr. Nichols, in regards to your work session request, all you need to do is just talk to our staff, they can schedule a work session, a date that is available, that works for us and for you. So if you just wait after the meeting and talk to our staff, they will, they will help you with that. Okay?
I could also do this afternoon if it can be worked in.
We have, we have to post all of our meetings, so.
I see.
So we, you need to talk to them, and then they'll, they'll work that out. So I appreciate you coming here, and I'm interested in this, the whole issue that's going on at Cheat Lake. I've become, and I've become alerted late in the process, but I, I'm interested in, in the process. Lastly, I just wanted to, again, this past week, celebrating my 23rd wedding anniversary, I just wanted to thank my family, my wife, for allowing me to be here in this position, because every time, every hour I'm here in this position is time that I'm not spending with my family. And it is a tremendous burden on them that they didn't sign up for. So I really, you know, last week, really kind of spending five days with my wife reminded me of how much this job does cut into my regular life. I love this job, I love my family, so it's competing values, but I do want to publicly thank them for their support over the years and apologize for all the time that it does take me away from, from, from my family, so, from my wife, from my family. This MUB example today is a perfect example of how much work that people don't see that we put in behind the scenes to make things like this happen. We'll have some important things coming up in the next couple of months with the broadband project that are going to take an incredible amount of time, but they're so exciting because they are going to reap benefits for years to come, long after any of us are gone, though people will still be enjoying the benefits of our efforts, so. But it doesn't make a difference, it's still time that, that we are away from our family, and I do want to deeply express my appreciation to my wife Jaclyn and our family for all the time that I am away from them doing this job. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Nichols, I, I do want you to know that, as Sean said, when we try and set up a meeting, we have a lot of other meetings already set up, so we will try and expedite where we can help you. But I am going to ask a request, that if we're going to set up a work session, that you specifically give the reasons why and what you're asking for us, because I'm not, I, I, we don't have the time to spend hours discussing it, but if you could specifically state what your goals would be and what you're sending, so then we'd have a better understanding of what we're going to talk about, okay?
Happy to do that.
Thank you, I think that'll just expedite everything. Okay, thank you. Number two, I'm pleased to say that a dilapidated house that we've been trying to work for a long time, and Colleen, I'm pleased to say that it, it's now down in Rockforge. So we did get one of those, I'm very excited about that, and I hope we're going to have some others. And we're looking forward to dealing with several more properties as we move forward, so I appreciate that. And the third final thing is just give you an update on the Hope Hill Sober Center, we had two football games, one of which was Pitt and the other, and we didn't have one person come spend the night there. So we are in the process of currently taking proposals, we have three interested parties that are making proposals to us, we're, we're discussing with them and considered the transition from our current situation to a program that would fit right in with Hazel's House of Hope. So that's what we want to make sure, and we, we feel that definitely we'd be able to make this transition, and I'll keep you updated on that.
Just a clarification, the proposals would be to MCR, not necessarily to the commission.
Oh yeah, no, actually the proposals would be to the Sober Center.
Right.
Who then would then go to MCR.
Right.
Yeah, so I want to get that clear.
Yeah, just to want to make clear.
But it's, I just want, keeping the information the commission informed, that is correct. So it would go to our board and then to MCR for approval, and then brought to us. Okay. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
We be gone.